This top sheet is just so that if you want to take notes on some of the major, I guess, decisions that you guys have to make on the ordinance. You go, John.
You do let them up even.
And then we can talk through them. I don't know if you want one of those. You know.
I think I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay.
I'm hoping.
So. You've got this top sheet. And then you have, I, I printed out a few samples. We've got Louisa County and then Des Moines County. And then there's one. That was given to me by a concerned citizen in Fairfield who wanted to have some input on our solar ordinance. Patrick Fonsold is his name. So. So I took a look at all of these and then I was, you know, cross referencing it with our wind ordinance too. To see if there, there was any, you know. Any similarities or carryover from one to the other. Uh, I, I don't think that there are very many except for, um, you know, some of the general public hearings and approvals, et cetera, et cetera. But there are some similarities in terms of what we need to decide, you know, with like the citing and the setbacks and then decommissioning plans, road use. That kind of thing. Um, so. I guess I don't know if you guys have any questions or you, how you wanna handle this session. Like just talk you through it all or?
Well, I know and, you know. Talking to. Oh, Bruce, of course, my supervisor from. Hawaii counties. They've got. Quite a. Few acres under. Consideration and then that also neighbor with. Muscatine County. But. I don't know where. Where to start as far as, so I'll just ask a question.
Sure.
Uh, do we start? With. See, I think the term that was used the other day was CSR two. Um, and I'm not sure what the two.
Why? So it's how, how they score it. So if you look at your beacon, it'll say soil and it'll say like it's a crop suitability rating. And so there's a, a one and a two, and those two are combined to get your total. So it's, it's.
One was done a few years ago. Two was the recent update, right?
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's generally through your, uh. What is it? Uh, NRCS office?
NRCS office, yeah.
So that would be related to like soil health or just citing, like whether or not you wanted to prohibit certain solar arrays?
Right. So what we're looking at there is if, if our number in Lloyd's County sixty five CSR, anything sixty five or above is considered. We try to protect that almost at all costs.
Okay.
So there's no development on that, that soil from agriculture. And so we try to keep it agriculture.
Is that part of your solar ordinance?
It's part of the ordinance.
It's part of the ordinance. Okay. It's not part of like any other zoning.
What, what county did you say?
The white county.
So I have, I think I have just the amendment. It doesn't really mention that.
Right. So in the, in this here, but when we start looking at agriculture, so this is allowed within agriculture. And so we amended the actual ordinance. And so that's the one that's actually the amendment there is what's been approved. So when we start the process on whether or not it can be developed in the agriculture ground, uh, we start with the, a Lisa.
Uh huh.
And then we do a Lisa markup on it. And that's one of the factors that we factor in when we develop that.
What did you do to arrive at the sixty five CSR?
So if we look at, we look at the NRCS or it's all on beacon, why is it counting? So it's, it's tabulated right there. So we look at the parcel. We go to individually look at the parcel number. We then go to soils report. That'll tell us what the CSR is. And then we take that as one factor in that Lisa markup. So some of the other things that we're looking at is whether or not it's, uh, you know, flooding area. If they have trees, but you know, much forest there, if it's, uh. On a main road. If it's, you know, near the undeveloped roads, like a dirt road, um, if we're, and we're also looking at what, where is it in relations to a town? Or to a site where crops would go like corner short soybean to go to, you know, industry to have dumped off. So they're, they're all weighted, I guess, is how we, we, I would say.
Do you guys do it or is the USDA?
I do it.
You do it?
Yeah.
Okay. So you don't have to have the USDA complete that Lisa, right?
No.
Okay.
So Bruce, um, in that case, for instance. And I'm looking for this, see if they're done.
Let me, let me back. Could, could, you're asking me this, we set the CSR? Is that what you're asking?
No, no. When you do the Lisa.
Of the total markup.
The total markup.
We do the total markup.
Okay.
By taking all those variables in place.
Okay.
But we do not set the CSR. That's, that's already predetermined by the NRCS.
Yeah, because I will say that when I was looking at the Louisa County versus Des Moines County, their soil health section is so much longer because they don't require Lisa, but it seems like that might be a simpler way to go.
That's what we've done there. And so it's.
Right.
For late seventies, I think. Is when they set that.
Okay.
Do you make a distinction between? Elizabeth is, is, is a commercial entity and Joe just wants to do some on his own land.
So we don't, but that's something that we're getting ready to amend. Uh, so if you're a commercial entity selling electricity within the confines of Iowa, you're governed under the utilities board?
If it's over a certain megawatt, so it's, if it's twenty five or over megawatts, then you have to get a certification from them.
Certification from them. So wind is, is already, I don't think there's any distinction on the, the wind side of it.
No.
Uh, but on solar, and this is something that I think is coming down the road that we're getting ready to deal with. Uh, so, and then, so we have, we have kind of the perfect storm going on in the white county. The first farm that went in or the solar farm that went in is a private, privately owned farm. And the second farm going in may be owned by a public utility. And it's gonna meet the criteria. And that's how I got, I didn't even know there was a distinction on both sides. And, and then we got into this and several years ago and, and so now we're looking at it from a standpoint of, okay, so when it's governed under the utilities board. That's a whole different ball. And then, you know, the people that we're talking to, uh, commission plan then play a part. It's kind of near.
And some counties will just accept the Iowa Utilities Board certification instead in lieu of an application because the county is gonna be involved in that process too. So, um. So that was something that I wanted to bring up and it's on the sheet, basically the personal solar energy systems versus the solar farm energy systems. There's some of the larger ones and if you want to.
I don't know that I made my, my, but if Joe wanted to put in. For his own private use.
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, okay. And it happens to be on land that has a three hundred CSR. It's his land and it's for his private use. So do we even, he would get involved?
So agriculture is, if you're deemed agriculture and you're putting it there for agriculture, we play no part in it.
But if I'm putting in a larger one that is gonna feed back.
That is different.
If it's twenty five or over, then it's gotta.
So.
I U B. Yeah, it has to go through the I, Iowa Utilities Board.
So, so I think what you're asking, if it's over a certain limit, um, we don't care if you're, if you're doing it on your own, you're not agriculture, we regulate that.
Yeah.
If you're doing it per agriculture and you're wanting to use it for your agriculture ground, we don't. Restrict you, we don't have no part of it because it's agriculture. But if you're agriculture and you want it to put back on the system, we then may say you need poll permit.
Right now, I don't think it's feasible to put in.
I haven't had anybody, I've not had any individual that has the capable or the wherewithal or ground to put in something large enough that it's going to say is, or have a say, wait a minute, you know, we've never had that happen.
Okay. And I'm still not sure that I'm getting. If he's got. His own land, right? Say, and it's, you know, a lot of farmland goes. Pretty much right up behind some folks from their house, right? And, and that land has a very high CSR rating. But he's putting in this, it's the solar panels instead of putting them on his roof. He's putting them out there in the field. Maybe they're building a framework, put them out there on field, kinda like what Taco John's has done there. Okay. But he's using it for his home. We don't care because it's his land. It doesn't matter what the CSR rating is, or does it?
So we, we still. You, you still look at the CSR.
We don't have zonies. Let's set.
Right. You, you still look, we still look at the CSR rating because our zoning requires this too. So he's still taking agriculture out of production.
True.
Even if it's his ground, we're still looking at the agriculture portion of it.
Even though it's for his own personal use.
So you guys can look at whatever you want in the application process. You don't have to apply, you know, you can decide how you want to interpret it too. You know, somebody says this is where I'm gonna be putting it, you know, and this is the purpose and this is how much energy it's gonna generate. And, you know, and you can look at the CSR rating and then you can determine. So you guys just need to make, decide how you wanna go about that.
Right. And so when we want to have something in the ordinance that says that Joe can do that for his own private use. But if he intends to expand it and. Share it or develop it further. Would, would we put something in there that says this is for your private use and it cannot be expanded? Or develop further?
Well, you could, or you could say you would have to submit like another application if you're gonna be going, you know, like if you're going to be generating more than a certain number of kilowatt. I mean, you know, I, and so, and I don't know what. I, I guess I don't know enough about it. And maybe you do to say what is personal use and what, when does it like expand? And you could limit it to acres too, you know, that might be a way that you wanna do it if you wanna limit it to a certain amount of land.
The problem you have is if you, I think if you do it that way is technology's changing so much. And it, I mean, this is, this field is moving a lot even since I got into it three years ago. And so what they're putting in today is three years ago, it would've been twice as much. Uh, so I, I think that's a good idea. If you're gonna allow, you, you want to not restrict that, then you want to probably have something, you know, maybe it's a half acre or an acre or whatever it may be.
And that's another way too, when we get to, um, talking about the application process and the permits. That's another way that we could decide how much to charge. Because, you know, when we were developing our wind ordinance, we had the application fee and then we had an additional charge per number of turbines. But in this case, if you wanted to do per acres used or whatever, I'm limited that way. I don't, it's up to you guys. So. I think you should do that just because like Bruce said, you know, the technology's changing and the arrays or the panels are gonna be getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And so. Um, you know, they're gonna be able to bring more electricity or energy with.
We define that very differently from a solar farm to a solar garden to just solar. So we, we've laid out the differences within the, the ordinance to define what. Cause you know, your solar farms is gonna be many acres generally, your solar garden is gonna be much smaller than your solar to home is gonna be drastically smaller.
And you guys may not care about regulating somebody who wants to put solar panels on the roof of their house. You know, like if you don't, if that doesn't matter to you and you just wanna focus on acreage used, um, that's something that you could consider.
Bruce, I think there's so many people in this town. Farmers, it's on their roofs.
Right.
I mean, even if I had to see three panels down by the old glove factory. And I don't think we can tell somebody what they can do or can't do on their roof of their house. Or their garage or something. What do you think about that?
We do.
I mean, you guys are already telling people what they can do with their land. So.
I know. The, the biggest thing is, is, you know, obviously we look at the county and the county. So every ten years we have people, we, we set meetings and people from the counties come in. And we discuss and we, we put a, a plan together to say, this is our vision, vision for the next five years, ten years, whatever your comprehensive plan says. And that comprehensive plan then gives us guidance on what do we want the county to look for. And the county there has said, we want farming to really stay farming. We don't want a bunch of, you know, things going up and doing this or doing that. And, uh, so. We, we do restrict that because we see a lot more today than we saw even three years ago. A lot of people are putting the panels up and they're not, they're not stationary. They're moving. So they're putting them on poles. And so we don't want them in the front yards. We don't want them in right of ways. Uh, so there is a lot more than just looking at a house because you gotta cover the gamut. You, you can't write an ordinance for every situation. Uh, but so you, we just kinda put a balloon on it and, um. And we get public input, you know, on that and everybody's there wanting it. So it's been pretty, pretty easy to move towards that solution.
And a lot of that you can do through the citing and design, for example, you know, like setbacks. You know, or prohib, prohibitions on putting them in the right of way, which we, you know, we have for the wind turbines as well. So setbacks from any occupied structure versus, you know, a non-participating occupied structure, a non-participating landowner property line, for example. So.
I'm not here obviously today, but we're good with before, but probably should bring Dwayne in on this.
Yeah.
As well.
And our setbacks are generally at ten feet and we're, we're looking the same way from the house. Cause it's electricity is an extra thing that could catch fire. So we want a structured way. And you know, the disconnects and stuff like that.
So let me get this straight. Is it in the white county where you've got this that you're talking about or?
So we enforce zoning in the white county.
Okay. So if I want, my house is in there and if I wanna put them on top of my house, I need to go to you to do it. And if I wanna put them in my backyard. I need to go through you.
Yep.
Okay.
So it's, it's pretty seamless. We just say, so what we're doing there is we're ensuring you put them in your backyard, but you're not. Encroaching on the neighborhood. You're not encroaching on a landlot. That's really what we're looking at. We don't necessarily care anything else. You, we get the permit in, we sign off on it. And then we come out, once it's been built, we come out and say, okay, yep, we're good with this.
Are you getting a lot of pushback on that?
We've never had pushback on it.
Really?
No. The only time we ever get pushed back is when someone builds a building. Um, and encroaches on someone else's land. And obviously. We, we then tell them to, cause they put in the permit, give us the drawing of where they're gonna put it. And they start building the building and that's not where they were gonna put it.
I guess one consideration to, um, for regulating whether or not people have them on their roofs is maybe for a safety and just making sure that there's a safety plan in place, just, and that, you know, our, our safety coordinator is aware of different solar arrays. And, you know, so I think that that might be one benefit of regulating, um. Any energy systems that are on roofs or. Accessory buildings.
Lee, are you thinking about having a? A public hearing about this? Let, get people input? Oh, we, we. In this county? We serve the can. I, if you pardon the expression, it may likely be all over the map in, in that regard, but. I don't, I don't wanna say this. I don't particularly have a dog in the hunt in terms of. Whether they go on the roof or whether they're, you know, what, as far as setbacks and stuff go. Um, I think it's a little. Um, I don't know whether it's as, sort of looking for, I don't know whether it's the setbacks will be as controversial as maybe the wind turbines were.
They wouldn't. It would just be like a glare issue. And you can also put some additional requirements in there that they have to minimize glare.
So, so the new panels aren't glare. So they're, they're, they're not. So really what complaints we have is, is when you have a house near a house is the lights on the battery chargers. Cause it's the flickering of the red light or the green that tells you, hey, there's something wrong or we're in good standing. That's what we see the most. We require all lighting. To be downcasted. Uh, but never in our minds did we ever think about having, there's gonna be lights on all of these battery systems that's gonna be red and green. And that tells the person, hey, there's a problem. And those glare to the neighbors. And so that's really what we kinda get the, the most pushback, not pushbacks, um, complaints about.
So that's the battery and our energy storage system?
Right.
Can I, hi, everyone. I don't wanna like jump in and, am I allowed to comment or like, can I help answer some questions? My name's Mackenzie with Mid American Energy. I know John talked to you, but I'm happy to kinda jump in. I don't wanna cut people off. If there's some questions or more information I can provide on some solar energy systems.
I mean, yeah, it's public meeting, so.
What was that? Sorry.
I didn't hear what she said. What was that?
It's a public meeting if you would like to speak.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, what, what can I kinda help? I see, hear a lot of talk on like the acreage caps, um, and just some setbacks. Is there anything I can help provide more context for? I guess, what, what, what are your guys' goals with your, uh, your solar energy ordinance?
Speaking for me, just for me. Again, I don't particularly have a dog in the hunt other than. I'm, I'm, I'm having an arm wrestling contest. I don't wanna necessarily restrict. A property owner's ability to do certain things or to sell their property or whatever, or to lease it, case may be. Same situation that we kinda had regarding the wind turbines. But. Uh, we are an agricultural county. That's where our. Most of our economic development. Exists and. So I got concerned to be perfectly honest with you and, and Bruce Moses, I got concerned when we started talking about five and six thousand acres in the white county in one development. And so that's where my concern is and, and I don't wanna use the word rein in, but wanted to be able to have some jurisdiction over how that would look or how it would proceed. And then the other thing is. From a technological standpoint, and it's been mentioned already this morning. And logic dictates that what we do today may not be reasonable twenty years from now. So I'm concerned about. The decommissioning and not creating any graveyards in Jefferson County for the product. And recognizing or understanding while we don't know what the technology is going to do, it's probably gonna continue to advance. It's such an area that where some of these large solar fields may become. I wanna say antiquated or, or not.
Outdated.
Outdated. Thank you. And yes, and I wanna make sure that we have those bases covered in some, some form. Can I ask you a couple of questions about the white county?
Sure.
Um. Is there one place that has five thousand acres?
So we're currently, we currently have eight hundred acres that are, is in production up and running. We're currently working on it in the white county side, thirty two hundred acres. And then on the musk, muscatine side.
Correct.
Uh. They have several hundred acres as well.
Is it all together? There's thirty two hundred?
So thirty two hundred and the wise is all together. And then it crosses the road and that's still part of the same, same system. I'm just not sure how many acres they have on their side.
So it was several landowners that agreed to this?
Multiple. Yeah, they start working. They've got the contracts or agreements in place. Uh, so when we went through and I, I've already done all the work on this, the Lisa agreements went through and scored everything. We ended up with three parcels, uh, that were, that scored higher than the Lisa. So it's, it's about one thirty is where we cut it off. So anything above that is, is, uh, we look at, try to protect it at all costs from production or from, uh. Uh, having that ground go out of production. However, in this case, one of the big numbers comes from, uh, it's in the, uh. We don't call it flood area. It's more seep water. It's very different in the white county. They have a lot of sand and levees through major rivers. So it's, the water comes up out of the ground. Instead of just flooding. Uh, but in this case here, when we go back through, so we looked at the, these three parcels. We had the same thing that happened in the eight hundred acres. The difference was, was the CSR that scored really high was in the middle and it was gonna be landlocked by the project. Well, that's pretty easy to explain and give justification why you make it part of the project. Uh, in this case, there's three outliers on the outside. So what we're looking at there is doing alternative farming. Uh, we proposed that to the company that we're working with to do like beekeeping, you know, stuff like that. So there's things that we can do to justify why it should be part of the project. Uh, in, in this case here, since it's a. Flood area, so it's in the hundred year flood plain. Um, but it, that there is also to. If it's in the flood plain, we also don't want houses to be built there unless they take precaution, blah, blah, blah. So that's also the reason why it scored high because we don't necessarily want things to be built within the flood plain.
No.
Um, unless you're doing extra steps, but most people aren't gonna do extra steps to build a house.
So, so my other question, I have many. My nephew works in the solar industry.
Sure.
And, uh, he says they're now, you can tilt your solar panels.
You can.
Catch the rays of sun.
Yep.
Is any of that happening down?
It is. So all the panels and eight hundred and the new one that's being proposed, uh, is will tilt. So it's, uh.
Do they need some goats? Cause I have goats and maybe.
Well, that actually came up.
Yeah.
So, uh, we, we talked about, so we just had a meeting here a couple of weeks ago with a bunch of attorneys and, and the company. Uh, and that got brought up where farmers bringing in some goats and that they've had some not so good instances.
Really?
With that. I don't know exactly what it is. So that's why we were looking at maybe.
Yeah, they heat everything, right?
Maybe doing some, uh, cause we have some beekeepers in the area up there. And so we were looking at maybe doing something like that to then give justification on why we would want them to be part of the project.
Cause how else would you keep the? How much would you mow?
Well, there's people that come in and mow. I mean, yeah, there's, there's, there's local contractors that mow the eight hundred acres. Um, there's, and he's now build a business on it. That's what he does. And he's got several employees that work there. We've got, uh, one local guy that works and all he does is go around and looks at each one of the. You know, every day he comes in and looks in services and, and so there's, it's generated some employment within the, within the county. It's not overwhelming. You're not getting hundreds of people, but it has generated some employment.
Because in Jefferson County, there's a lot of people that like to hear about. That sort of thing.
Sure.
You know, there's interest in the better way too.
We were, I don't know if we still are, but we, the white county solar farm was the largest or is the largest in Iowa.
Do I understand that Davis County has some, a small?
That, that I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know if they, they have one or not.
There's one right out on the north side of Fairfield, you see, that's still.
That, that's pretty small.
Yeah.
If you go to the white county, as soon as you drop over on ninety nine and all you see is solar panels. That's eight hundred acres. So just imagine what thirty two hundred is.
Well, you're north on two eighteen. Uh, towards Iowa City, there's.
That's, I would call that a solar garden.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. Well, this may be something that Bruce can answer, Mackenzie can answer that. And in reference to the one that you're talking about out north there at M U M. They got, at the end of each row, they got these. Big, I assume they're battery boxes, big. Boxes at the end of each row.
Generally converters, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And so. And so do they do that now as opposed to having each panel having its own converter?
I'm gonna let the expert, okay. Should we all be into that?
Yeah, so those are. Those are gonna be inverters that are usually set at the end of, um, rows of panels that just convert the electricity and do the step, step down transformer and then the collection lines take it over to the substation. So you'll see those kinda sporadically spread, um, where those at the end of the rows. For a solar. Solar facility.
So one of the things that we also do is, is even though we allow this, it's under a special use permit. So it's, it, the permit comes in and we allow this to happen within the agriculture, you know, realm. Uh, but it's dependent on the special use permit. So then it goes to the board of adjustments, you know, they come in, we, there's many steps that we look at leading up to. I've been working on this for three years and we're probably two years from. Going into production or not production, but yeah, probably two years. Uh, so it, it takes a while, you know, cause they started three years ago getting agreements, maybe even before that. Uh, I got a phone call. So it's, it's a, a long. You know.
Now you're talking about that specific solar farm that's going in now you're talking about?
Yeah, they started two or three years ago, just getting agreements. I've been talking to them for probably two or three years. They reached out right away and said, this is our thoughts. And I said, this is what, you know, we require. We got them the information. They're really working with us trying to, you know, get all of the things in place. Um, and then. You know, I think within the next month, we're looking at going to the board of adjustments for potential approval.
So in that three year period, and this, Kenzie can answer this too. So we sit here and they're whoever's sitting here, having the conversation and, and trying to determine how to move forward and, and. And, you know, what their plans are, but it's taken a long time to come to fruition. And during that timeframe, technology changes and it changes the whole academic or the whole, uh. Equation. Do you have to start over then?
No, I would say that technology is always gonna change. And that's why I say you don't lock, keyhole yourself into, you know, any one thing that's, you know, technology. One of the things that we looked at is solar arrays and that was the, one of the big things that everybody had at the first meeting. I remember this has probably been five years ago. I remember this has probably been five years ago, was the glare of, you know, the solar panels. Well, they don't glare. They, you know, they want to take as much light in and that's one of the things that, you know, it's good to have the solar companies at those meetings so they can kind of talk about that. And, um, educate people and that was, you know, we took it over and we started the process like January, February of twenty seventeen. Um, to just put an ordinance in place. Within a year, we had an ordinance in place and within six months. We had everything approved and it was ready to go to prime time. Uh, but one of the things that I would encourage, and once you get your ordinance done is I went through and did a check sheet. And I just went line by line and once I got something in, checked it off and then you get something else in and then checked it off. Uh, but I encourage all solar companies that if they're coming into when we go to the board of adjustments, they try to put as much stuff on their maps. So you're not fumbling through papers and that, that tends to kind of relieve the public, at least in our case. Uh, so they can actually go up and look at, you know, if you're looking at a solar farm, one of the biggest things that we heard was the setbacks from people that are not part of the project. They didn't want it to encroach on that. So we put in place a three hundred foot setback from the dwelling. And then if you still, we, we had about four people that were still really not unhappy. They just wanted some extra stuff done. So what we did in the ordinance is we told them that you need to work directly with the solar farm. We're not going to be a mediator in the process. So we put them together, the solar farm then worked with the individual homeowners. And they had to agree on whatever it was. And then everybody signed it and brought it back to the board of adjustments. And then we said, okay, everybody's locked into this agreement. We got the things in place. And it was really simple. One guy wanted some shading put on the fence to try to block. So he's not necessarily walking out his front door or side door and there's the solar farm. They put in some, um, I'm not sure what it's called, maybe she does, but, um, just some stuff, extra stuff within the fence. Just to kind of block it. And after that, it was pretty smooth sailing.
I think that's definitely really important to kind of piggyback off that point. Um, I mean, you can like with a special use or a conditional use permit, you know, put those kind of. Special additions in there. Make sure, you know, the company is working with the landowner, something that, you know, we see is. Working with other adjacent landowners is like neighbor agreements to make sure. You know, other people who aren't, you know, maybe signed up under easement are also on board and positive towards the project.
Then I'm gonna ask, Mackenzie, I'm gonna ask you a question, uh.
Yep.
And it, it may sound snotty, but it's, it's, it's not really just, so, you know. As a general rule, we don't have Mid-American, for example, here in, in Jefferson County.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a lion and then there is some access energy, I think that's what we've got, right?
Yeah.
And so Mid-American wants to come in and they want to put in a solar farm or solar gardens or whatever, you know, whatever it is. And, you know, obviously you would enter into agreements with the land, landowners and that sort of thing. But. What is the benefit overall to the residents of Jefferson County if we're not able to use that energy or if it gets? The terminology that was used with wind turbines is, oh, it gets banked and it, some of it could come back here. My gut instinct tells me that if it get you, gets used here, that it would be sold to a lion. And so then the cost for the homeowner or the user is going to be increased as opposed to if I could buy it directly from Mid-American. And that's a convoluted way of saying it, but I guess what I'm asking is. And maybe this is the board as well. If we allow. Anybody, I guess you'd say to come in, and I don't mean this, or it's sound the way it sounds. What's the benefit? The cost benefit analysis. In other words, you know, if, if we look, when we looked at wind turbines and we said, well, it isn't staying here. What's the benefit other than the landowner who's, who's getting, pretty okay, do we apply that same? Question.
Well, I think what you're trying to imply the way I'm taking it, if we're going to put up solar farms here. We should have some benefit here instead of putting them up and then our electricity leaves and goes someplace else. We should be able to benefit from that since we're agreeing to have them here. Is that kind of what you?
Well, yeah, you know, and, and obviously since, since Mid-American doesn't have any, although, uh, they. Traditionally have been a lower clock, a lower cost. Energy provider than, than a lion has, but the point is, is that if they're not actually physically, if I'm not actually able to go buy it from them directly. So to speak, I'm, I'm a captive audience with a lion. They can sell it and they can profit from what they generate. But I end up paying for it. More than what I would if I could buy it directly.
That's kind of the American way. There's gotta be a middle man in there that's gotta get his cut out of everything.
Yeah. Now she's making a fortune off her goats that are running around in through their weather. Just.
Other ones.
Yeah, the ones that eat the solar panels and they light up the world.
You know, the thing of, the thing of it is, you put in your souls, like at the farm, we have solar.
Right.
It reduces our electric bill tremendously. But we're at the point we. Probably wouldn't have anything to sell because we use, use what we have. But you know, these folks are putting in solar farms. Where are they making their money?
Leasing the ground.
Do they, I'm asking him.
Oh, I'm, uh, what, I wanted her to answer that question that Lee's got.
Okay, okay.
So I'm happy to, happy to jump in. Um, I can't speak to, I guess, what a lion or like the local REC's do for their generation, um, items. But, and, and Mid-American doesn't have a project proposed here. We're just here to kind of help, um, answer questions and, you know, help. Help in any way we can. With local benefits, I mean, you see, um, like if a solar farm, utility scale or just kind of any solar farm goes in. Um, you get more of a tax benefit is what we've seen historically, at least from our projects, um, the ag. Land that, you know, would get property taxes. It ends up being more with the generation replacement tax, um, from a solar farm. So you see more kind of come into the county, um, paid for, from these solar farms. And then with also just kind of more, some more grid reliability, uh, solar farms aren't necessarily like a. Uh, they're going to be there, but they're not a permanent, they don't leave a lot of permanent structures behind. The only thing you really see is kind of a substation. Which can help reliability into your, your local grid. So like, you know, Iowa, where unfortunately get some of those, the worst of the worst in the winter and in the summer. Um, when you have those kind of extra grid reliability that a solar farm can bring in with the substation, it helps kind of mitigate those outages. Um, even for like other energy providers in the area. It can help reroutes. Um, and pro- provide relief to an outage that happens, you know, just due to kind of crazy, crazy storms that we experience. So. Those are the benefits that we, we see, um, if, if, you know, with Jefferson County, you guys are in a, in the Mid-American service territory.
So I can tell you what I've experienced in the West County.
Okay, back to this.
So, so one of the things that we found very handy is the two companies that we worked with, they went out to the general public. Uh, the current company that we're working with now, so where they're putting it, there's a levy district, there's a pump district, there's. Uh, so there's, there's many things down there. So there's boards and they've reached out to them. They've worked out agreements with them. To guarantee, you know, cause it benefits the solar project, cause that's where everything's going. Uh, and they, they worked out agreements with the levy district, the other districts within, or other boards within that area. Uh, and they monetarily have committed to so much money a year. Uh, the other thing that the company has done is they've reached out to the, so there's, uh, something called the. Uh, Muscatine and Loisa County Betterment Group and they've committed. So they've committed so many dollars every year up to a certain, like, at the beginning of the project. And then once the project's, cause this is a kind of a phase project.
Yeah.
And so once they meet the standard that they're going to be putting online, they've then recommitted a different number. Uh, and it's quite large that they've committed to that project, but I, I would agree with, with, uh, what she's saying as well, that there's, there's some. Tax benefits to the, to the county. Uh, but you also got to remember, let's say, you're getting ten thousand dollars in taxes. Today on the ground that you're looking at, uh, it would be potentially considerably higher. Uh, that would come in on the other end through the formula that the state has. And depend, depending on how much they use every year in, in electricity.
It's after five years though.
It's, so that you get relief for the first year. And then it's the next, I believe it's the next, uh, odd year. That, uh, takes that into account.
Yeah, the, the, the assessments are in the odd years.
Industrial property shall, oh, so it shall not increase actual assessed taxable values of the property for five full assessment years.
For the property. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the actual benefit to the county. So it's, it's based on the formula that the state has, uh, dependent upon how much electricity is, is generated.
Not the property tax.
So that's what I've seen in the two projects that I've worked with and it, it really comes down to what are you willing to ask for? You know, uh, they've worked with the levy districts and stuff like that. They, they, they reached out to them. And so they had direct communications and they were willing to put, you know, some skin in the game and, and, uh.
So, so do you, in your ordinances then, do you have, uh, the, um. I, I think I go to the answer this, but is there something in there that says, you know, if, if, if you're approved, you, you're going to, to. Um, commit some percentage of production or whatever to your greater Jefferson County foundations?
We don't, we don't get involved in any of those discussions. It's just the, the company that, that, uh, we're working with has committed to put it in writing. And committed to put it. In the package when it's presented to the county. Uh, but they've committed off, right off the get-go, once it starts production. This much money every year. And then once they reach this much capacity, it could potentially change to this. Well, I mean, to us, there's no teeth to it. So it's really a handshake in a deal and they're, but they're willing to put it in writing and it's their deal. It's not ours. Uh, but ultimately what would happen if, if they don't do it? You know, it's, it's really what, what their words were. And I asked that question. I said, what happens when you're not here? Uh, cause typically.
They get sold.
They get sold and they said that they, that would likely be a condition that they would put, since they're giving it to us in writing, whoever would buy it would also have to uphold. Those conditions.
I mean, certainly. It's kind of like what I would call the Riverside Casino effect. You have casino and, and. And so the casino does provide money to some entities through their, their profit or whatever, like the Washington County and that sort of thing. Yeah, I mean, if that was something that, not necessarily that we could enforce or anything like you say, but if it was something that. Was in the works where they would contribute to the Brayer Jefferson County Foundation or something of that nature.
The other thing that I would say is in, within the eight hundred acres that we have now, we had a farmer, they had multiple. Hundreds of acres, but he didn't want to necessarily have it in his backyard. He lived right there. So they purchased his house. And he moved and built a different house. Uh, the project went in and they leased his ground. Uh, but the project went in and, and they purchased a couple of different houses throughout the project. Tried to put an office in one of them, but that's illegal under the ordinance. So they had to then sell it back to the property owner. Um, so there, you're always going to have those hiccups that come with it. You just got to figure them out.
See, and our ordinance would have to be, correct or wrong here, but, uh, I remember her name. I don't know what I was gonna say. Our ordinance would have to be in some respects more specific because we don't have zoning, is that? In, in other words, what I'm asking is, is that because we're talking about a specific circumstance that we're, that we're applying it to as opposed to. I mean, if you have zoning, there's other ordinances that may impact your solar ordinance directly or indirectly.
Right, so, s- so, o- one of the things that we've, we've since learned from this, so the first farm did not put a. A generation station on, so a battery power or battery backup, so they could send stuff there. And so there was not one built within the, uh, special use permit and we had a farmer contact us. I don't know, a year, a year and a half later and wanted to build a backup storage on his ground, but it's not part of the, the special use permit. Well, that's not allowed and the, it's only under this provision that you can put in a solar farm and have everything. If it was within the fence, I would have no problems with it. But since it's on agriculture ground and it's not a conditional use permit. Criteria, does it meet the same criteria? We told him no.
So Elizabeth, I'm, I'm gonna ask you, if, if we develop an ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Or when we develop an ordinance. And we establish a permit process and possibly.
Similar to the wind ordinance.
Right, and what would we charge for a permit process? Hypothetically, and I'm just, pardon, just throwing this out here to everybody. And I'm not saying there wouldn't be somebody else sitting around this table at some point in the future that might have some expertise in, in this area. But. Since we don't have some, and we don't have a board of adjustment and all of those other things. Could in our ordinance, uh, something be in there that the company or companies that are wanting to establish. Solar farm or whatever. And we hire an outside entity, not on retainer rather so much, but. On each circumstances that comes forward and say, okay.
Like review it and make sure it's okay.
Our consultants, yeah.
And we could pass that cost along. Is that what you're asking to the, yeah, to the applicant? If you wanted, we could say, hey, we're going to be hiring somebody with expertise in this area to be reviewing all the applications. And then advising the board of supervisors and then we're going to pass along that cost to the applicant.
Much like we did, if you remember with French Roniker, when Dakota Access came through. They were our eyes and ears during that project of that fifteen miles coming through, through the county and they kept a surprise of what was going on. And Dakota Access. Paid those, those costs.
Yeah. And if that's something that you're considering, it would probably be helpful to have. That person or entity be involved in telling us what we should be requiring in the application process, because I can kind of. I can cobble it together based on, you know, my research and, and other ordinances, but if we're going to have somebody, if you have somebody specific in mind, then. We should just work with them about what they want to see in an application.
And I don't know how, how you all feel about that, but I know I could sit here and I have my thoughts and my ideas, but. Clearly I have. Really zero understanding of what all was involved here. Um, and what it, what it should look like. And then, you know, and I have no problem taking. M- Mackenzie at her word in that, right, this is what we're going to do, but. All of the different things that are involved in bringing this to. The fruition as far as, you know, putting in the solar and that sort of thing.
Well, I would like to just say that, uh, similar to the wind ordinance and, and Bruce just touched on this. You know, a lot of these discussions are going to be happening between the landowner and the company that's going to be leasing the land. So we don't have to really, we don't have to go into all of the details and we wouldn't be able to, because we can't really restrict. You know, those conversations and those contracts they enter into. So I mean, a lot of it's just. Similar to what we did with land, if we want to be talking about setbacks from occupied structures, setbacks from property lines. Whether they are participating or non-participating landowners, you know, there are some general safety things that you want to consider regarding signage and. Fencing and then of course the decommissioning.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and.
You have a bond or something that you require in the.
Financial liability, which we have for the wind ordinance as well. We would require that.
How, how you would write it, uh, I don't know what the format would be to provide it.
So it's based on your decommissioning bond. So an outside agency considers and factors in the decommissioning. And then ours is based on a contingency of, I think it's, uh, it's either five or 10%, I don't remember now. And then there's, uh. Uh, so we review, required it be reviewed every five years. And then every five years, we put an inflation factor in there. But to factor in the next five, so every year for the next five years. And then that's what our decommissioning. Uh, bond comes down to rate or bond rate. And that was wrote into the special use permit. So you probably, I don't know if you.
It does talk about the five, um, going over the cost of the decommissioning plan every five years, but. You know, it doesn't go into, it's like, that's the bond. Um, I'm kind of curious, you guys have in yours. Um, you've, you determined basically that it's no longer in production after a hundred and eighty days. How did you guys land at that? Because I have seen other places, three hundred and sixty-five days.
Sure. So the current ordinance right now says that you have to produce within this timeframe within the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
And so they went back and said, hey, we're going to use the same, same timeframe. Now, this is a, not a drop dead number. You can always come back to the board of adjustments and say, we're working on it.
Right.
What we're saying is, is we want to see something moving.
Okay.
Otherwise a hundred and eighty days is when we're cut, cutting. Otherwise, a hundred and eighty days is when we're cut cutting it off and saying, rip it all out.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I don't think anybody in their right mind is gonna just put, you know, multi-million dollar set there and do nothing. Uh, but you always have the opportunity to come back to the board of adjustments.
And so I don't know all the details, and maybe Mackenzie can jump in if she has any, um, additional thoughts, but regarding that, my understanding is that it can still be active
Sure.
um, past that one hundred and eighty days. And we have something similar in our wind ordinance, because we talk about decommissioning and the time at which we've determined that, you know, it's no longer producing energy unless they come to the board of supervisors and submit a plan to kind of get it active again. Um, but yeah.
So one of the things that we're looking at there is, is we know approximately how long there, because a lot of them's come to us and told us, like, here's our agreements. This is what, you know, how long it is, generally it's twenty, twenty-five years. And so we know at the end of that. Uh, we didn't want it leave it, we didn't, as a county, we did not want to leave it in the kind of the, the individual's hands to say whether or not, I, yeah, I'll just keep it. Well, then you're, you're not going back into production, and that's the intent. At the end of the life cycle of this this solar farm, then it goes back into production and agriculture then starts again.
Right, of course, there's a time at which it's no longer producing energy and it needs to be taken down. But if they're coming back with a plan of putting it back in production
Sure.
or determining at what point it should be decommissioned, I guess I was just curious with the one hundred and eighty days.
We were more looking at if there'd be, say, a tornado come through. And it falls to, it's out of production, or there's a very small you know, uh, footprint of them still working. We want them to get it back up to full production as soon as possible.
Got it.
So that's kind of the mentality is, we didn't wanna set there three years or even a year without a plan in place to get these back in production.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think that's the mindset of the hundred and eighty days.
Mm-hmm.
I see that we've got an indemnification. That was a question I had. We would want something like that, which I'm sure you've already put in there. On this special use permit fee structure, and it says zero to fifty kilowatts, three hundred dollars, is that one three hundred dollars, or is that, I mean, how is that?
So our farm is much larger than that.
Right.
And so it's, and you could, it's
Yeah, I know, it goes up.
It's, it's, they they eat the max.
Okay. But what I'm asking, I guess, is, I'm envisioning, because I don't know. Okay, there's five hundred solar panels out there. Is there a permit for each one, or is it for the entire project?
It's for the project.
So similar, we had, um, in our wind ordinance, we had the application fee, which I guess would be similar to that, but then we also had an additional fee per turbine, so you know, we could do something like that if you wanted to do it per acre, if you wanted add in an additional fee per acre, or, you know, like this system size fee structure.
Uh, I've got a question. I'm sitting here thinking. My neighbor decides he wants to put in a solar farm down for me. And they plow, excavate, whatever, and then in a year or two, I start having trouble with tile above him. Is there anything in there that for them to come back through, because they plowed through a tile or something and got problems? Is there something in there that they will take care of it for so many years if there is a problem with them? Am I getting through what I'm trying to say? Because I experienced that with rural water. They plowed through one of my tiles and it showed up four years later, and they come and worked it out. They took care of it. And they certainly put that in there.
Yeah, we had that in our wind ordinance too.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, regarding
Need to jump in here, uh, something that we see a lot of, like, solar projects is, um, like, uh, yeah, like, kind of what was like a drainage use agreement, or like a drainage agreement, road use agreement, a decommission agreement, just to make sure the county's covered, um, in case those things happen. I mean, ideally a developer would be working with the county to make sure they're identifying those those drainage tiles, um, but a drainage agreement is something that we see a lot, where, you know, we cut and go back and forth at the county and redline and make sure, um, it's at a good place to kind of make both a parties feel comfortable. So that can also, depending which way you go with your permit, um, a condition, if you wanna do a conditionally use or especially use or something.
And we, we have that as well, so we give them one way in, generally. Now, you can have employees that's gonna go the wrong, down a gravel road. Uh, but we try to give one way in, one way out, so they can, safety reasons, you know, because you're now taking a bunch of people, putting them in an area. Uh, so we kind of designed the gravel roads, you know, this is what we need to have you come in on. Um, the previous company, when we did the eight hundred acres, come in and laid some rock down to get conditioned the gravel roads pre-construction, uh, pre-mobilization and bringing stuff in. Uh, working with county engineer, there's road use agreements, we look at those, we look at, okay, if you're going to town to get lunch, these are not the roads we would not like you not to use, uh, because it's not necessarily part of this project. People do it. I'm not saying they don't, but, uh, we try to have road use agreements in place, uh, as a condition of the special use permits.
Uh, Joe, if you wanna see something a little bit more detailed, if you can pull out your Des Moines County Iowa ordinance on page fifteen, it talks about road use mitigation of damages. This is probably good
Page fifteen?
Page fifteen, yeah. It's just a good thing for you, you know, it has a little bit more detail than the Louisa County, um, just because you know, this is also working with their their zoning ordinances, so, um, and we did have something like that for our wind ordinance, just so you know. We had a road use agreement that had to be entered into with our county engineer and reviewed by our county engineer, and then there were requirements after decommissioning, um, for maintaining, and then we also addressed the, uh, drainage tile issue.
Susie, do you remember your question?
No, I don't. I was just sitting there trying to jog my memory again. So you know what? After this, it'll come up, but I'll remember. Okay, that's how it works.
Uh, Suzie, earlier you were talking about having a public hearing, and I remember what we did with the wind ordinance, is we kind of had a draft that we, I think Abby is, is this correct? We had a draft that we published, and then we got input. I think that's that can be helpful.
They can feel like they've had some.
Absolutely, and it's helpful though, I think, to have something proposed, so people can give their input, because people prefer to
Doesn't it have to be a public hearing for an ordinance anyways?
It does, it does.
You mean just prior to?
But maybe prior to, um, and we can work out some of the, we can address some of the concerns before having that.
You guys have that informal, or formal, however you wanna put it.
No.
At Peken.
Oh, Peken, yeah.
Just so that you heard from the public.
I think that that to your point, yeah, I was, I think that that's positive, um. But I also think I don't wanna say this. This is in some ways, there's, is, they're similar, but in a lot of ways, there's differences between this and the and the wind turbine. And I can't say necessarily for obvious reasons, but they're so but I do think that trying to get like you said, the the setbacks established and this and that, what it looks like, and 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 Elizabeth is 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 right, we we don't necessarily the board doesn't necessarily, shall we say, regulate everything in terms of the agreement between the landowner and the you know, in tho- in those regards, but then there are some similarities, I think, in that you don't want it up to your back door, but she's got sixty acres that she wants to include in the project, so trying to pit hole that out is gonna be, it's gonna take some time, but obviously, here of recent everybody's, or not everybody, but a lot of folks have been approached, we've been approached. Obviously, Mid-American was here and we've received phone calls and
Letters.
and and letters, and so it's, it's, it's beginning to develop on the horizon anyway. But I, and I think we need to have something in in place sooner than later, but we can always, I guess, tweak it um, as is necessary, but I don't have a clue what it should apply.
Well, I can just, I mean, I can just put something together and present it to you. I wasn't sure how you wanted to go about with this work session, which is why I kind of gave you some sample ordinances and some guidance that you guys can look at if you want, or I can just put something together and then you can review it, you know, based on some of the conversations that we've had.
Well, and I, I, I appreciate you beyond measure as far as that part goes, and I, and the way that you do things, put things together, I just I know for me, my biggest concern is making sure that the taxpayers as a whole are not forced to some major cleanup somewhere down the road that we do, and I know it's a balancing act, and I understand that, because um, we're not necessarily completely on the same page here, but there is a balancing act between the landowner doing what he or she wants with their land, but at the same time trying to preserve at least from my perspective what our base is, what our, what the county is built on. Um, and I, I, as you all are well aware of, I just, I'll just make this point one more time, I have real concerns about taking farmland out of production. But by the same token, if we establish something in our ordinance that and I would rely on your expertise and your expertise, because you're in the agricultural industry, how to define what CSR rating is that we should use and those things that come into play for that formula.
So I think today's been a very good start. We've all learned a lot of stuff here. So I am all for letting Elizabeth go back and give us maybe a rough, rough, rough draft of what she thinks we ought to do, and then we can tear it apart.
Sure, no, and and that's fine. I would like.
I really like giving you guys my opinion and then having you say, no, thank you.
Read through all of this stuff, too, if there's anything that sticks out. Something I do see with agriculture structures, they plant a row of trees to kind of block off something, and, you know, if some, if I had a house right here, they're gonna put solar panels here. I don't have room for a row of trees, maybe there can be something on the other side of that property that there could be a row of trees and plant, or the homeowner run a desk.
So this individual did that, so their bu- buffer had to be three hundred feet, so they had a they had a section through there, so the company that did that put in some, put in some trees and they worked with them, and and, uh, that's something, we would not be even in the realm of saying, hey, you gotta do this. And that's why we said, you two go work it out, come back to us and explain to us what you did. And so they worked it out, negotiated, and we kind of left it all up to them. Uh, one of the key points, I think, is, is I tried to educate everybody on zoning. Some people said zoning's bad, so really zoning helps to protect your county.
Oh, yeah.
If if you do it right, you get people involved, you let people have a say in, in what they wanna see, the vision of their county, and what they wanna see within their county. It, I've had very, very, very good experience with it.
That'd be something similar to what they do up around Mason City, where you have hog confinement, so they put in the middle of nowhere in the field, they've
Buffer zones up, yeah.
Good for you.
So, I, I think what I heard Suzie say is, is that, turn Elizabeth moves on it. And which I'm, I'm all for that, uh. My question then to the board, and Mackenzie, you're always welcome back. It'll be on the agendas when we have these meetings. My question to the board is if we want to invite Bruce back too.
Of course.
And if you want.
And you know, Bruce, you're who says, as far as I'm concerned.
What?
You're who says.
Who says?
If you guys are
One who says this.
If you're interested, I can, um, get something together. I can send it to Bruce first for his thoughts if you want.
If he has time, that'd be really nice.
Yeah, you've got experience with this. We're just getting started. And I don't know what all to expect. I got some ideas on cleanup and abandonment, stuff like that.
Well, but I would just say, look, when you're reading through it, look at your county. You know, your dynamics are gonna be vastly different than Louise County. I would not take Louise Counties and say as a whole, take it all. I would not take Des Moines Counties as a whole and take it all. We have three major rivers running through the county. They have lots, you know, it's a bedroom community. It's, um, very, very different. There's a lot of floodwaters. Um, so I would, I would just look at your county and say, you know, what's your vision for the county? And then get people involved and kind of, you know.
And, and as you guys are well aware of, uh, we, we don't have a lot of floodplain area, but we have seen where Cedar Bottom, South and Highway One, or, you know, we've seen Cedar Bottom get out in some significant ways over the years.
Well, your floodplain maps, you're gonna show you that.
Right.
And it's one of the things that you need to pull out and look at. You know, that's one of the criteria we look at when we're looking at scoring the uh, LISA or the ASA, whatever you wanna call it, um, the aggregate site assessment.
I would presume these companies wouldn't necessarily wanna build on a floodplain.
It doesn't really bother that, bother them, because floodplain's different, because you you can put pillars in, I mean, it's, it's, uh, so obviously, keep stuff up, up out of the floodwaters and they base it two foot of a, above a floodplain. And it's been, you know, scored by the flood division at DNR.
So, hey, Mackenzie, um, if, if these, like, and I never asked this question, but like out at MUM, their panels do rotate to follow the sun. Does that make noise? So if it's next to Joe Ledger's house, do they hear those panels moving?
Not really with the panels moving. There's not much, um, noise, or we haven't heard anything, um, from landowners nearby. But that's something you can look at as well as like a, like a sound sort of a requirement. Sound study to kind of make sure that we're not.
The sound is more of a concern with the wind turbines. That's my understanding. I think that maybe there's some sound associated with that um, the battery energy storage system sometimes.
So that did come up, and the person sits on our board, he's, he's the chair of the Board of Commissions. And he thought that that would be his biggest, the biggest downfall from the humming of the battery. He said that was not it. It was the, the lights coming from the batteries.
The batteries, so they don't really hear the sound.
And he's
That's the only thing that makes sound, is my understanding. So if there was any concern regarding sound, it would be coming from that. But then also, you know, to Bruce's point about how, you know, we've got some other considerations in our county, would require FAA um, you know, like, does it comply with all FAA just because of our airport too, so, um.
And we put something in muscatine, same deal. We didn't have to deal with the eight hundred acres and muscatine, we had to deal with the FAA, so we had to add that part of the ordinance, and that's factored into some of that, but it's really on the muscatine side than it is our side.
Well, Fairfield is talking about a solar farm out by the airport. I don't know how, how advanced they are on that or anything.
I know there's some discussions about that.
It's just mostly discussion, yeah, correct.
That's, yeah, that, and but that's another consideration too, speaking of, when we had our wind turbine ordinance, we allowed the incorporated towns in the county to kind of give their input and make sure that the application goes to them. What I've seen in some other ordinances, I don't know if it's in Louise's or Des Moines County or some other one that I read, basically, if we wanna regulate unincorporated Jefferson County, if we wanna regulate all of Jefferson County, and then carve out those little, those areas that can then give their input to us, that's another consideration.
Well, I, I guess I hadn't thought about that, but I, I guess it really is appropriate for Lady City or Packload or Fairfield or Blockridge or any of the rest of them to be able to say.
Which is what we did in our wind ordinance, yeah.
And the, the zoning law deals with all that for us. Since we have zoning in the county, you have to have zoning in the city, otherwise two mile radius, blah, 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 but there's, there's other factors.
Well, that's the other thing, yeah, there is the two mile zone. That extraterritorial zone that each city has. So.
Yeah, and I, uh, I did, um, send a message to Melanie Carlson and Doug Reiner yesterday, just saying that we were gonna be talking about this and, you know, if they had any thoughts, give me a call or let me know.
Now, just real, real quickly, because I know everybody's wanting to move on, but you just I had, kind of, ripped by, well, we were talking about this out by the airport. We want to do something to I don't wanna necessarily put the brakes on something or the skids on something, but shall we say, a preliminary thing or something that, um, This can't all take place before we have an opportunity to develop something and have some jurisdiction of what it looks like or how it works.
I guess I don't really know where they are in the stages.
I don't either. So I'm, I'm, my question is, is that. Do we develop a permit process right off the bat, something that where they would have to come and talk to us because it would require a permit? Or a moratorium or something of that nature till we get something in place?
I mean, I can look into it. I guess, what would you like? Is that what you would like?
Well, I, I just, I, I don't know. What do you, what, I'm, my concern is, is that something moves forward before we have something that. And then we have this, whatever it is that we have. That is completely outside of, and I'm not saying that they would be irresponsible or any of the rest of it. I just. I think we would like to know what's going on. I've asked questions and I keep hitting this brick wall. Nobody wants to answer anything. They don't really know, but I just know they're. Somewhere out there with the airport, and I've got land out that way. And I was wondering if they're going to have to come across me or what, what? What if, I know the panels will be on airport ground. Other than that, I don't know anything else where at or anything. And the airport may be under it entirely. We may not have any jurisdiction at the airport. I don't know, because that's a city.
Right, city owned.
I had to make an educated guess, since you have nothing in the county currently.
Right.
You don't have zoning, that you're not going to be able to stop anybody from moving forward with the border, but they got one of them to.
Yeah, especially if they've already got some things in place, um.
And like I said, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into people's plans, but by the same token. I would like to know what they are.
Yeah.
Because you know somebody's going to knock on, on Suzie's door and say, what the hell's going on out here? And if we're not priced of it, and you've already indicated that it's been kind of slow. Mouth at this point. I'm not, again, not suggesting that anything nefarious there, just, and you can, they may not know at this point. So, that sounds like we can't do anything.
Well, she's going to check in on.
Yeah.
I'll just, I'll just hang out there on that lane, just not let anything happen.
They, they got one, somebody had a bad taste in their mouth, so they're gonna do what they can to work back at them. Well, and, and, you know, but again, I want your guys' expertise regarding performance ability rating, how that looks. You know, do we bring, do we bring Steve Wimmy in on this? Probably wouldn't hurt for him to say. And we certainly want Dwayne in on it.
Yeah.
Well, I thought that maybe I would um, send a message to Brett, Dwayne, and then who is the person that you were just talking about too? Okay, yeah, 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 I'll, I'll um, talk to Steve. I know with our wind ordinance, Bart was concerned about. Emergency communications interference. I don't think that'll be a problem with this, but if you think there's anybody else that.
I wouldn't think so, but I don't. I, I really know very little about it. And that, what you guys talked about, about. The technology is such that I didn't even, even think, ever think about glare, but the technology is such as, has changed that. And then I would never have thought about the flashing lights, but I could see where that would be aggravating. Especially if they're.
Are they big lights or just a small?
Just a small, they're pretty, pretty small, but he says it's annoying when they're sitting there just. All the time.
Well, they, they're on and off all the time.
Well, it's, it's red or, red or green, you know, if there's a problem, it just sits there, it indicates that there's an issue.
Uh, well, yeah, that would be annoying. It's flashing. If it stayed the same. Uh, either on or off, it wouldn't be so bad, but flashing could.
And then um, just lastly, I guess if there's an issue, we were, we, we require a hundred percent access. So we're able to get on the facility, uh, battery storage, obviously fires involved. Ensuring that they get, you know, walk through what's their impulse storage. Some of those things you'll factor in.
I would imagine that would be part of like a safety plan that they would have to establish with, like with our wind ordinance. The safety plan was established with our, with Brett, basically, you know.
Well, and I would think these companies would want that because they're not necessarily going to be here. Twenty-four, seven anyway, so they would want the emergency services to have.
And there needs to be signage too, or I would, I would suggest that we require some signage there on the fences to know who to contact. And, you know, of course with warnings and.
And then they would provide, they were, they provide keys to our emergency. So that they can access lock gates and that sort of thing.
There's a key provided. I'm not going to say where it's at, but there's a key provided to everybody that needs access to it and knows what it says.
No, they're just not going to tell you.
Yeah, exactly.
So, so, Mackenzie, I appreciate you, you being on board and we welcome you back. So I, I, what I'm hearing is we just dumped this back in Elizabeth's lap.
No, we go to the, huh, we go to the expert.
No, 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 I'm not an expert. I'll just put something together and then you guys can tell me what you know.
You're far better than we are.
Um, so, uh, and I, I appreciate that. I appreciate you being here. I appreciate the fact that. You're willing to come back. I know where you live. Actually, I don't know where you live, but I know where you live.
I know he lives east.
Yeah. So, real quickly, just very quickly, one of the things that. We're wanting to look at too is amending our subdivision ordinance. Uh, and, you know, we've got the one acre minimum, which I think is still okay. But one of the things I'd like to see changed in that.
Wait, is this on the agenda?
No, no, I'm just saying to you that looking at. Um, restricted it to not structures, but to a single dwelling.
We've talked about this before at length.
We've got.
We've got different definitions and proposed amendments.
Some more.
Input?
Well, we got more mini homes and stuff that are starting. Uh, former development out north. So I think we just need to get something in place some even later.
Well, you can put it on an agenda and we can talk about it.
Okay.
And I will come to you with some proposed definitions, amendments. Probably the ones you've seen before, but.
I, unless, if there anything else to. That regarding this particular subject matter. Otherwise, we will turn the world loose and. I appreciate everybody's input. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Well, Kenzie, thank you.
If you guys do take any time to review any of the documents that I provided to you and you have some input and you would like to tell me about. Please do, and then that can help guide, you know, what I drafted for you guys.
All right.